It is I do show 5 o'clock. So, good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the NACADOTCHAS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members is present. Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Lea Beth App.
Here.
The Reverend James Ervin. Dr. Tyrell Grooman. Oh, thank you Reverend. Yay.
Here.
And Dr. Grooman, thank you. And Mr. Farshid Nairamond.
Here.
Thank you. We thank you all for joining us tonight. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by the use of the Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public, as we would at any in-person meeting. Members of the public who follow the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during public comment will have that opportunity. If you would like to per-comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. The Zoom software application allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties and ask for your patience. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at TOMA@OAG.Texas.gov. Right, the first item on tonight's agenda is an executive session. The board will now conduct in a closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:03 PM. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will see you shortly in executive session. The board is now reconvening into open session at 6:07 PM. I'll ask Ms. Mindy Winslow to give the prayer for us tonight, please.
Dear Emily Father, I just want to thank you so much for this beautiful day we've had, Father, and I also just want to thank you for the opportunity and the honor to serve NACADOTCHAS ISD as a trustee, Father. I ask that you be with us this evening and guide us and just pour your wisdom into us as we make decisions that will affect our community. Father, we love you and we thank you for all that you do for us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Right, I believe Dr. Trheo has a few good news items for us on his report this evening.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, President Fitch. Board, our very own Dr. Audrey Young won the election earlier this month to the State Board of Education and will be representing District 8, where she lives, right here with us, among us. Dr. Young is NISD's Director of Student Services, and she's earned more than 570,000 votes and will replace Barbara Conhill, who did not seek reelection. I'm very proud of what she's accomplished. Having an educator on the state board is important for public schools, students, and from all over the state, but more importantly, here in our area. We're proud and excited. It's one of our very own. Congratulations to our own Dr. Young. We want to send her a big kudo. Also, we want to congratulate, and just last night, the NACADOTCHAS High School Golden Dragon Band participated in the Region 21 Marching Contest in Carthage High School. The Dragons earned a First Division rating, receiving ones for all three judges. This is the 40th time since 1980 the Golden Marching, Dragon Marching Band has received a First Division rating at a regional contest, an incredible run and a success for our band. So, I want to send them back. We, in and out end on this note, but not any less with regards to NACADOTCHAS High School's sophomore. We have Aiden. Aiden Funerud was named First Chair Trumpet in the Region 21 Jazz Band last month. Aiden also qualifies for an area chair and will soon audition for the All-State Jazz Band, and student auditions were held virtually and the judges scored a performance remotely. So, congratulations to our very own Aiden for doing a great job and we'll continue to wish him luck as he progresses. And President Fitch, that's all I've got. Three great items to celebrate.
Absolutely. And Aiden, best of luck at your All-State tryout. That's really exciting. All right. We will now proceed to the first of two public hearings tonight. This one will be the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or FIRST Report. After the presentation, viewers of this meeting will have an opportunity to comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes and must pertain to this presentation. Anyone wishing to comment on the FIRST Report can use the chat feature in Zoom to request an opportunity to speak. Use your full name in the request and ask to comment on the FIRST Report. Those wishing to comment will be taken in the order of their request. Making our report tonight, I believe, is Ms. Lisa Barbrick.
Good evening, President Fitch, Board members, Superintendent Trheo. I'd like to share my screen. So, I'll do that now. Now, the last time I did a public hearing, we were Zoom bombed, so hopefully that won't happen tonight. All right, so, tonight is our annual public hearing on the Annual Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Management Report, better known as the FIRST Report. The primary goal of the FIRST Report is to achieve quality performance in the management of the school district's financial resources, and it's designed to encourage Texas public schools to manage their financial resources in such a way to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. This is the statutory authority that gives us guidelines on what we're supposed to report. So, there are 15 key indicators. The rating status is, as noted above, 90 to 100 is a superior, which is what we received. We received 100 out of 100 maximum possible points. Last year, we received 98 out of 100. So, there are three types of indicators. There are critical, the first five questions, they are pass or fail. The next set of questions are on solvency, and the final questions are on financial competence. So, these are the key indicators, the critical indicators, pass or fail, and we passed all of them. Basically, that we are, they're stating that we submitted our annual financial report on time. We had an unmodified opinion. There were no instances of material weaknesses. We were in compliance with all of our debt payments, as well as our payments to government agencies. And then the final one actually was not scored. Solvency indicators. We had the sufficient number of cash on hand to handle our district operating expenditures. We got the full 10 points there. Our current assets to current liabilities ratio was sufficient to cover short-term debt. Our long-term liabilities to total assets were sufficient to support long-term solvency, and our general fund revenues were equal to or exceeded our expenditures. And these are more solvency indicators, and we received the maximum score. And I want to point out to you, number 11 was the districts, the school districts administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio. And this is the, what we have been chasing for many years, and we finally achieved it, and we got our maximum 10 points.
Right. We've been chasing that for a while.
Yes, we have.
Right on the cusp.
Financial compliance indicators. This first one was what we did our financial report, agree with our PMS report, and yes, we did. Again, were we free of any material noncompliance? And yes, we were free of nonmaterial, of material noncompliance. Moving on, I just want to show you, so, last year's score, we got 98. This year, we got 100 out of a total possible 100. Here's some history on our ratings, and as you can see, we've had, since 2010, 11, we have had the highest possible ratings we could have gotten. And here is our celebration.
Congratulations. That is, that is outstanding.
With this report, we are supposed to provide the superintendent's contract that can be found on the NISD website, as well as in our Financial Accountability Management Report, which was provided on our website. Here is a report of the superintendent, as well as board members' reimbursements. These pretty much all deal with travel. No amounts were reported for outside compensation and/or fees received by the superintendent. This is an explanation of what is considered a gift. This reporting requirement only applies to gifts received by the school district's executive officers and board members and their immediate family, as described by Government Code, Chapter 573, Subchapter B. From an outside entity that received payments from the school district in the prior fiscal year and gifts from competing vendors that were not awarded contracts in the prior fiscal year. This reporting requirement does not apply to reimbursement of travel-related expenses by an outside entity when the purpose of the travel was to investigate matters directly related to the duties of an executive officer or board member, or matters related to attendance at education-related conferences and seminars. His primary purpose is to provide continuing education. This exclusion does not apply to trips for entertainment purposes or pleasure trips. And we had no amounts reported for gifts received by executive officers and board Business transactions between school districts and board members for the 12-month ended June 30th, 2019. Doing business is Jack Backers College Book Store and Spirit Outfitters. An amount of 105,000 was paid out. And at this time, I will open it up for comments if there are any.
All right. I'll remind anyone, anyone, when anyone wishing to comment on the FIRST Report can use the chat feature on the Zoom app to request an opportunity to speak. Use your full name in the request and ask to comment on the FIRST Report. Those wishing to comment will be taken in the order of their request. Mr. Lineberger, do we have any requests?
No, ma'am. I have no requests.
We will now close the public hearing. That will move us to our second public hearing of the night. Our Campus Targeted Improvement Plans, or TIP, for Emeline Carpenter and Fredonia Elementary Schools. Again, after the presentation, viewers of this meeting will have an opportunity to comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes and must pertain to the TIP presentation. Again, anyone wishing to comment on the report can use the chat feature in the Zoom app to request an opportunity to speak. Use your full name in the request and ask to comment on the TIP report. And making our presentation on the TIP report tonight is Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Fitch, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Trheo. I'm going to pause and share my screen. So, we just have a couple of written-down talking points that I wanted to talk to the public about, as well as the board. So, for the 2020 State Accountability School Year, our, all districts and campuses received a label of "Not Rated," declared state of disaster due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The district or the campus shall continue to implement the previously ordered sanctions and interventions for improvement, such as the targeted improvement plans for campuses that were rated, had an overall rating of a D, which was Carpenter Elementary, and an overall rating of an F, Fredonia Elementary. The plans are required to have board approval. Both campuses did have public hearings at two different times, or each, each campus had their own night that they presented to the public. These plans will be submitted to TEA in December for approval. Each campus selected three prioritized focus areas for the 2020 school year. It is important to note that these are the same three prioritized areas that were selected for the 1920 Targeted Improvement Plan. However, I do want to note that the plans have been updated to reflect the progress that was made prior to school closure at the end of the 1920 school year, as well as, as we're leading into this school year. The three areas or essential actions that were selected are to develop campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities, a compelling aligned vision, mission, goals, and values focused on a safe environment, as well as high expectations, and data-driven These plans were created with the help of the campus leadership team in conjunction with the campus principals. Each of these plans contain the same information. I do want to pause another moment and just let the public know that these two plans do contain the same information, however, they look very different in format. The reason they look different is because Fredonia Elementary, we are piloting a particular software. It's the same software that the district uses for the campus and district improvement plans, but both plans contain the required information for TEA. Carpenter's template is the TEA-provided sample that they've given us to use. All the, both plans contain a rationale or reason the campus chose to focus on those essential actions that were on the previous slide, how the campus is going to build capacity, what barriers might they enter, or barriers to implementation that they may face throughout the school year, how the campus is going to communicate these priorities to the stakeholders while also creating buy-in, the desired annual outcomes for each of the areas of priority. And then there's a district commitment theory of action that's also listed. It is also important to note that these particular plans are designed around three 90-day cycles. The first cycle, we're almost finished with the first cycle because it ends in November. The second cycle begins December through February. The third is March through May. Within each cycle, these plans discuss the following. The campus's desired annual outcome, the desired 90-day outcome, what barriers they may interact with, and how do we overcome those, and then district actions for this particular cycle. Within each cycle, you have action steps, the alignment to those essential actions, start and end dates, the resources needed, the person's responsible, and then evidence used to determine progress, and lastly, what evidence are we going to provide to show that we have met, met our goal that we've set for our actions? So, that was just a brief overview from just a perspective of the plan, and now I will entertain any comments.
All right. Board members, do you have any comments? All right. We'll open the public hearing then, and anyone wishing to comment on the TIP report can use the chat feature in the Zoom app to request an opportunity to speak. Use your full name in the request and ask to comment on the TIP report. Those wishing to comment will be taken in the order of their request. You have any, any, any requests, Mr. Lineberger?
No, ma'am. There are no requests to speak.
We will close the, the public hearing on the TIP report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. That brings us to the public comment portion of our, of tonight's meeting. We did not receive any requests to address the board as outlined in the meeting notice. So, that will take us on to the consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there's a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter, and it will be set aside for further discussion and a separate vote. I will open the floor for a motion.
Hi, President. I move that we accept the consent agenda at all.
Okay, I heard a motion from Mr. Montoya. Do we have a second?
Ms. Fitch, this is James Ervin. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Reverend Ervin. Appreciate that. We have a motion by Mr. Montoya, a second by Reverend Ervin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. That will take us to our discussion action agenda for tonight, and here we have consideration of the campus targeted improvement plans for Emeline Carpenter Elementary School and Fredonia Elementary. Dr. Hill, do you have anything that you would like to add at this point?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion.
President, do you want him to say something?
Yes, sir.
You can hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, Dr. Grooman.
In Daily Sentinel, the e-edition from Wednesday has a link to the, these two, these two items for the tips program for Emeline Carpenter and Fredonia, just so that the people who are listening to this, this, at a later time, they could go to that edition and they can actually pull it up very quickly, or they can go to our website, the NACISD website.
Thank you, Dr. Grooman. Right, the floor is open for a motion.
Madam President, this is Farshid Nairamond. I move the board approve the campus target improvement plans for Emeline Carpenter and Fredonia Elementary School as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Nairamond. And do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mrs. App.
All right, so, I have a motion by Mr. Nairamond and a, a second by Mrs. App. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. That will take us to item nine on the agenda tonight. A report from Mr. Charles Bradbury regarding a proposal to place statues on the Thomas J. Rusk Elementary School campus. Mr. Bradbury, are you with us?
I'm down you here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. I sure can. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, President Fitch and Fitch and members trustees and Superintendent Trheo. I'm a board member of the Friends of Historic NAC Inc., and we're the group that has placed most of the statues, that you, bronze statues that you see around town. We're asking, we're coming before you tonight, asking for official permission to place, to have two sites, one in front of the old university building, actually to the side of the old university building, that it would be on the sidewalk near Mount, about center of the side of the building, and that site would have a statue of Professor E.J. Campbell. We have a, a donor that has given this significant seed money to start this project. We're ready to move forward with it, and all we need is your permission to place the statue there to make this happen. The second one is, we would like to have your permission to place a statue in front of TJR School, of Thomas J. Rusk at some point in time, and that would be a site that we would let you determine for that, what would be the most appropriate place for that particular placement of, of that statue. We're coming before you tonight, just asking for your official written permit, permission to do that so that we can move forward and raise the money to first do the E.J. Campbell statue, and, and then later the second statue. Any questions?
I, I have a question. I was reading some information that Ms. App brought in about Professor Campbell, and it said he was 6'7" 250. Are we going to get all of him in that statue?
It'll be larger than life. I read that also. It may be one of the largest statues we've ever done, but I had the same information. It does say he was 6'7" 250 pounds, but we usually have the statues that are larger than life, so it would be a large statue. And normally now, we do elevate the statues on a pedestal, so it would be probably much larger than life. Any other questions?
Dr. Trheo, thank you, Mr. Bradbury. Dr. Trheo, do you, are you, do you see any concern or have any, anything we should know about this?
No, I'm actually excited about that because it, it gives a little stopping point right there in front of one of our campuses, and I've seen a lot of community folks stopping and enjoying the rest of the statues. This is an additional stopping point that would put him right there in, in front of two amazing sites.
Thank you very much.
Right, this is not an action item on tonight's agenda. Dr. Trheo, did you need any further action from the board for us to support this?
No, ma'am. Just, just notification that we're excited about this opportunity. It's something that we're looking forward to.
Are there any, do any board members have any concerns to express?
I'd like to make a comment. This will put the statue on our heritage walk, and some of these statues are for amazing people for NACADOTCHAS, and some represent a people, like the country doctor is just representative of all our country doctors, even though it was patented after his doctor. I am thrilled that the statue that's going to represent educators is E.J. Campbell. He is a remarkable man, and his story needs to be, to get out there more and more. And so, I, I'm just so thrilled that we can have him on the campus. so, I, I'm just so thrilled that we can have him on the campus in our heritage walk, and this is the man that we've chosen to represent.
Thank you. I think those, those are some well-spoken comments, Mrs. App. Any other comments?
All the heritage things, Dr. Gromon, when you look at all the ones that show up, they add something to every location that they're ever placed, and they're of the highest quality, and they're something that the whole city and community and county can be proud of, not only for today, but in history, down the years. This will further direct people to the roots of this city, which are very important and many, many, many hundreds of years old. So, I, I, I really trust the, the, this committee who, who handles all this, and I think that this will be our part to help emphasize education in, in our community and to all of our visitors that come to our community.
Well said. Any additional comments? Hearing none, that will take us to our last item on the agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Mindy Winslow. I may adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Do we, do I hear a second?
This is James Irvin. I'll second the motion.
We'll be lost without you two. All right, any, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time tonight. Greatly appreciate your service. We'll see you soon.
Stay safe. Have a great Thanksgiving. Great.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.